All right, well, this is the November 17 meeting, 2022 meeting of the planning board. Present in addition to me are board members Peter Cutner and Harry Korsland. Board member Tom Mekus is not present. Apparently, there's a competing meeting before the select board. It's a listening session for Long Beach, and I guess that's more popular than our meeting. But anyway, we don't have a ton on the agenda. So we'll start the meeting as we always do with public comment on any matter relating to planning. And then we'll move on to the next items on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, you have a hand from Toby Arsenian?
Sure.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. At your last meeting, when you were attempting to deal with Michael Rousio and his proposals on removing Phil, I spoke about a section of the Code of Bylaws, not the zoning bylaw, that would definitely apply to his project. I don't know whether you bothered to check that out or not. That's Chapter 14E, Section 3, and it's titled "Topsoil, Stone, and Gravel Removal." It's on page 96 of the May 15, 21 edition of the Code of Bylaws. Another subject, I gather you're having Penny Pilsner in tonight to talk about the stormwater. Is that correct?
No, that isn't correct.
Oh, I had heard earlier that you were. At any rate, I have a suggestion for that. You're involved in it because she has decided, it's none of it gravin' in stone as yet, that you would be the permitting authority for the stormwater permits. The DPW would be the enforcement arm, which is rather strange. I spoke with them at their meeting, I believe it was yesterday, and Jim Gardner expressed reservations about the arrangements that Penny Pilsner has come up with. Apparently, they've spoken, so better if you talk with them directly. But he was saying that it ought to be one authority right through. Whoever issues the permits should also be responsible for enforcing them. That's not the present arrangement. And he also expressed reservations, saying that there needed to be a funding source. And at present, there isn't. I've spoken at the Government and Bylaw Committee meeting. I object to what Penny Pilsner has come up with, both the arrangement on who's to issue the permits. And she has, although she shifted it around, is intent on keeping the section on what's called a stormwater utility, which in plain English means another enterprise fund. And my feeling is that's poisonous, radioactive, and needs to come out of there. But never mind my opinion, since you're all concerned in this, and there are reservations and different angles on it. The Conservation Commission, for instance, feels that they should have the permitting authority. It would definitely make sense, whatever your opinions, if you could get all of the people involved together in one room. No longer a physical room, it would be a Zoom meeting. And that would be your board, the DPW commissioners, the Conservation Commission. And also, you should, if you're talking about finances, have someone from the Finance Committee. It would make sense to have the selectmen there as well. So I'm asking if you, if you would take that and consider it and try and get in touch with all those people and bring them together. Nothing will be done with the stormwater bylaw presumably until the fall 23 town meeting. So there's plenty of time in which to mull it over and come to some sort of conclusion. Does that make sense?
Well, the last part that you said certainly makes sense. You know, I haven't, I'm hearing it from you. I don't doubt what you're saying, Toby, but I haven't talked with Penny Pilsner about it. I know there were some reasons why the planning board, she thought would be the best entity. The DPW did not want to do it. So that eliminated them. At the time, I think when she was, when they were first considering this, there was no, there was no Conservation Commission. So it was hard to consult them about it. And, but that's changed now. So, you know, let's see what happens. I think we have some time here. I am not you and I don't know, you know, we haven't even discussed this with the other members of the planning board. It's, we will do it, but, you know, not because we really want to do it. It's just because it's almost by default. But if, we'll see, you know. Yeah, if you need, if we need to have a meeting of to sort it out, we may have to, we may do that, but you know, we may not, might not need that meeting because, you know, the DPW isn't, right now, doesn't want to do it. So there's really only us and the Conservation Commission, you know. I don't know where, what their status is right now.
It's on the agenda for their next meeting.
Well, good.
You might want to send someone.
Yeah, they, it would be nice if they would reach out to us too, you know, but maybe, maybe we don't do things like that.
Failing that, you could reach out to them.
Yeah, no, I don't know who to reach out to at this point.
Laura Kozicek is chair.
Okay, yeah, I will reach out to her.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, any other comments?
I don't see anybody, Mr. Chair.
No other hands up?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move, actually, items two and three are on the agenda. I put them on the agenda, thinking that we would hear more on those applications for the excavation and also the fill from the Yankee Clipper LLC and the Landing Group for the fill. I have heard nothing from either one of them. I have, I have reached out in the interest to the DPW and spoken with Gary LeBlanc. He was unaware of either of these two projects. He was concerned about them, obviously. And he and I, and maybe some others from the DPW may, may meet just so we can, just so I can tell them what we know, and they'll be aware of it. Because I, you know, I don't, if you remember from the last meeting, I, you know, the DPW is definitely involved in this, using town roads for hauling and excavations. And, you know, they're going to definitely want to know what's going on. So, but right now, nothing's going on. And until something's going on, we've got nothing to consider at this point. I think, I think frankly, the two, I think Mr. Rousio asserting he's the principal of both these companies has to consider how he's going to present these applications, whether he's going to present them as, you know, just this excavation piece or actually what they really are, which is a much bigger project, which makes a hell of a lot more sense. But we'll see. And item four, Stormwater and Land Disturbance Government and Bylaws Discussion. That was on the agenda at the request of Tom Mekus. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what he wanted to discuss. Toby's already brought up some of it, but he's more, you know, tonight, he's at the selectman meeting, talking about, you know, Long Beach. So he's not here, so we really don't have any discussion about that. So moving right along. This may be our shortest meeting ever. Member items, does anyone have anything? I have a few items, but entertain any other items. If not, I'll tell you what mine are.
We had, the CPC had the our evening meeting on Tuesday to encourage people to put in grants for, for whatever their project is. We went to the grant, it was basically a presentation to anybody who wanted to come, who might be interested in proposing something. Got about a dozen people, I would say, besides the core committee.
Yeah.
But there's a fair amount of money out there. There's also money that hasn't been used, and you may claim some of it.
I wonder, I wonder if the planning board could put in a request.
Maybe we could use some of that money for our much-needed housing production plan.
Sure.
That's an interesting.
I don't think money, I don't think money is our issue with that, Harry.
Oh, yeah.
It's not, the money is not the issue.
Oh, yeah. I had no idea you got paid to do it.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. But yeah, I, I will, should I? I don't want to talk about it tonight necessarily, Peter, but what are the parameters for these applications? Should I talk with you about that or somebody else on the CPC?
Yeah, I can get the package that well, I'll first, I'll, I'll send everybody the sort of instructional package we put together for Tuesday night.
Yeah, that would be good, because you're right. I mean, they have a lot of money and it's.
And a big part of the discussion was, right now, housing gets about 26% of the money. And there was a couple of people from the groups, the people there saying maybe we should emphasize housing a little bit more. There's nothing that, all we're required to do is, I think of the, of the full amount, everybody's, everybody should get of the four categories, housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. Everybody should get at least 10%. So you can't freeze any one of those categories out. So each year, 10% of the money should go to each of those. That leaves 60% could all go to housing or all go to recreation or whatever.
Yeah, wow.
So there was some encouragement that we emphasize housing. But, you know, the CPC doesn't invent the projects. They just sit there and hope.
Well, right.
Somebody brings the projects to them.
Okay, well, yeah, that would be good to get those packages. Any other member items?
I, I'm curious if anybody read the article in today's Gloucester Daily Times regarding what's going on in Manchester with the, the efforts that the planning board has undertaken. They had a special town meeting to vote on zoning ordinance changes that was actually dissolved. And interestingly enough, they seem to be having some of the same challenges that we had at our prior meeting and, and a number of things, changes that are, you know, considered to be nuts and bolts types of things.
Yeah.
Got tabled.
Really? I didn't know. I thought they approved them all, but I guess I.
Well, Tom's.
Some things were.
Tom sent us the online, on the online list. And then yesterday, it was, it was in the paper day before yesterday, and they left out the second half.
Yeah, that was bizarre.
Continue going.
Kept out looking for.
They had the whole thing over again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll read it tonight then. I didn't see that.
They had some of the same problems that we had, you know, people that would felt that there wasn't been enough transparency, enough discussion of it, other people saying, hey, look, we've had 100 meetings, spent four years and no making. So it sounded like there was a lot of tension back and forth.
Yeah, yeah.
So the voters, the voters apparently felt as though they were being rushed to make a decision on something when a little, you know, advanced studying of the warrant might have addressed those concerns.
Yeah, well, that, heard that story before.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, one thing I did want to bring up, there's only, there are three of us here now, but I did get a request from town administrator about how to respond about how we want to conduct our meetings from, this is for the period of December 1 through February 28, whether we wanted to remain a Zoom or whether we wanted to go back to in-person. I, just looking at the list of all the boards and committees and how they're divvied up, it's interesting. I'd say it's about 50/50. I was surprised, actually, that so many were in person. But I have to say, the ones that were in person were generally the more obscure committees. And it could be a function of not, just not getting someone to host it either, you know. But anyway, we, we need to decide where we want to go. Mitch needs this information by November 22, which is tomorrow. So not, you know, I don't know if anybody needs any time to think about it, but any thoughts on that, folks?
I'm satisfied with Zoom. With CPC deciding to go on Zoom, I like it.
Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it to Zoom better. I like the fact that the public is a little easier to get on.
Yeah.
And it's winter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm, I'm, you know, but I think both have their pros and both have their cons. And Zoom is fine. Zoom is fine, because in-person, you know, can be good too, but it's also got problems. So, I mean, I, I don't know.
Is the town set up for us to have hybrid meetings?
I don't think so. It's like, or the other, you know, so. Okay, well, then I will report back that we just are going to continue through February, at least, having Zoom meetings. And that's what we'll do. Okay, a couple of other things. I did, just a matter of interest, I did get a call today. I was steered by Mitch. A Boston Globe reporter was steered to me to talk about the, you know, what's happening with our transit-oriented development provisions. And so I talked to him about that for about 15 minutes. He's writing a story. It's not just about Rockport, it's more about, you know, the, the whole thing in general. But what he did say, which was kind of heartening, was that he said that we are way ahead of almost every municipality in, in pursuing the TOVOD bylaws that we did. And apparently, this, the, you know, Department of Housing, Community Development has come out with some new guidelines. I haven't read them yet, and I told him that one of the problems is, you know, we're still waiting for the Attorney General to approve what we did. So, you know, how are we gonna go to the next phase if this phase is still in limbo? You know, we need, we need a decision. And so that's where it was left.
We're not named in the suit, are we?
Well, I don't know. I don't think we are, but I think the town is.
I thought, I thought the Board of Selectmen was named in that suit.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
Yes, they were.
The town is named because it, it had to do with the town meeting.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, but it's not the suit that I'm worried about. It's because the suit can go on forever and but it's really the fact that we haven't, Attorney General hasn't approved, you know, what we did. And that's more of a concern. So I'd like, I'd like to get that out of the way, you know.
Well, I, I find it curious also that the state, the Commonwealth was named in the suit. So, I mean, they've, they've got to deal with that as well. And, and to me, it's not just about Rockport, but about the entire.
Yeah, well, they're claiming that the, that the law, the, the majority vote was unconstitutional.
Right.
That's definitely a Commonwealth issue, you know.
Right.
Hey, Bob, who is, who is the person in the meeting with the iPad that has? I can't even see who it is. It doesn't even have an identification. I don't.
That, that could be Mary. So Mary's down in, in, down in Sandwich tonight, and, you know, she, she had some interest in the, what was going on with the application.
You're Mary?
Tonight. Oh, I thought hers said Mary's iPad. I don't, maybe that's not her.
Just said, I just said iPad.
We're still going. Yeah, I just, I'm on the phone with, I'll just tell everybody, with Robert Craig, who's at home, who's our host, and his internet just went out, so. We're just talking, but we have no host. So, anyway, yeah, there's someone, there's some, when you say Mary, Harry, you mean your Mary?
Yes.
Oh.
But, but I don't know that that's her iPad, because I think her iPad is identified as Mary's iPad.
Yeah, there's someone in the meeting who's, it's weird.
Interesting special effect.
By their image, and there's no image. And, but anyway, yeah. Okay, well.
I saw her chin when she was first setting it up.
We need to get rid of her unless we know who it is. Okay, he says it's coming back, so. All right, just one other thing. Okay, so.
I can send them back to the waiting room, it looks like.
Yeah. So we'll see what happens. There should be an article coming out in the next few days. I don't believe I said anything scandalous or, you know.
Well, you should be used to this by now. You're, you're, you're a regular newspaper celebrity.
I, on Simes, just to let you know, I've been working on that decision. There's a lot, there was a lot of documentation in that matter. I'm trying to put it all together and come up with a decision. I'm almost finished. I will be sending it out just for everyone to review as a draft. And we can talk about it. And we should be able to talk about it at our first meeting in December and, you know, either, you know, modify it or approve it or whatever then, but it's, there's a lot there. There were, there were a lot of things that, that came in at different times, as you probably know, from the file, is that, you know, we're getting, we'll get an email from Bob Biznick, and then a week later, we'll get another email from Bob Biznick, and then a week later, we'll get another email from him. And then we'll get an email from this Catherine Howe, and then we'll get another one from her. So all this stuff was, it wasn't like one package from each, from the applicant, and then one package from the other side. It were all these different things. And, you know, we've got, Mary has an interesting filing system here, so it's, you know, it's kind of kept me on my toes and figuring out where things are. But I think, I think I've got it all together now, so I'll be sending it out shortly. And that's all I have.
Motion to, well, no, I'm jumping ahead. We still have another.
Yeah, we still have a public comment. Period. So anybody, oh, Toby, you know, I can't, I don't, I don't know if I can do anything here. Can you talk, Toby? Oh, Robert Craig's back. Okay, good.
He's back, yeah.
Good, he's back. Yay.
I can unmute him.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Two things, you spoke about coordinating with the DPW, your concerns on Michael Rousio's two projects. You said that you felt that they all needed to be dealt with as one. I don't see how that's possible, but it would definitely be two different filings for a site plan review, even if they are interlocked. But the other thing is that although you may talk to the DPW, and that's good, you definitely need to get a hold of the selectmen. What I say about Chapter 14E, Section 3 involves you as well, if you read through that. The other topic, what Peter Cutner said about the community preservation. He's absolutely right. They can only deal with, you know, projects that people submit the paperwork for. It's not up to them to dream up the projects. Although, if you read the section in the bylaws, which I say is defective, it's the law, and it says that they're supposed to coordinate with various town boards to come up with projects. My feeling is that that's dead wrong, because just as with capital improvement projects have to go before the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, there needs to be an analogous and parallel system for town projects that would go before community preservation. So that people for town projects aren't competing, elbowing each other aside, so that there's some rhyme or reason, you know, both in terms of how, how pressing the needs are and also in terms of the amounts of money that are available. And Peter Cutner said one thing that I don't think is quite correct about the allocation of the money. Open space and recreation, I believe, is one category. So I think it's three categories, not four. And when it comes to the town meeting, first, you vote to approve their report. I voted against it and likely will again. And then there are three votes, which are obligatory, to put the 10% into each of those three categories. But you don't have to even spend the 10% in any year. You can simply put the money into the categories and save it. I mean, it's a choice on policy in any year, how much is spent and how much is, is, you know, stashed aside for each of the, the categories and generally in the main account. So, for what it's worth.
Yep, thank you. Hey, any other public comments?
I just have a quick comment that's sort of, I guess, semi-public. After having some discussion about using the online-based permitting software and discussing with some people who had gotten feedbacks, we were planning on moving forward with that. So it's sort of a, I guess, a last call for feedback as far as making the decision on whether or not we do it. But there'll be plenty of opportunity for feedback in how we implement it and how the review process works on the side of members of the board and such.
So I have a general question, Robert. The software itself, is it, do you know if it's widely used by other communities?
Yeah, it's pretty generally used. I was actually just at a conference last week and was sitting down at the table with somebody who, another GIS program manager, who uses it in their town. They're not, I guess, the biggest within the space as of right now, but they're the same vendor that we use for our website, as well as some, our community engagement request reporting system. So they tie into, together, in together well, as well. So it's sort of a two-pronged reasoning behind picking them as the direction to end up going with this.
Does this software interface with other applications that we already use or may use in the future?
Yep, yeah, so it interfaces directly with our payment processing system that we use in town. So in the future, people will be able to pay for anything that has an application fee or permit cost associated with it. We'll be able to pay directly online rather than having to process paper checks for that, which is nice. It ties directly into our 311 system, so our request reporting system that we use within the DPW, as well as other portions of town, which is nice. So for code compliance issues, if you, you know, rat out your neighbor for having grass that's too long, it can create a code compliance issue within the permit software as well. So it's nice in that respect. And then obviously, because it's developed by the same people who developed the website, it ties into the website very nicely as well.
Hey, Robert, you know, I, I missed that meeting that you had. How can we get up to speed on this?
Yeah, certainly. So there's a, there's a recording that I had shared out, I believe it was a week and a half or so ago. I'll reshare that with you, just so it's fresh in your inbox, so that you can find it. And feel free to, to watch through the recording. There were some members of the ZBA, as well as the Health, Board of Health on for the meeting itself. So they had some questions that they asked and answered. But if you have any follow-up ones, I'm in close to discussion with the consultant as well.
Yeah, I would love to see that. So yeah, if you could send it, I'm sorry, if you could send it back.
Yeah, no problem.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay. There's nothing more, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Harry, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Peter, roll call, boy, Peter.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor, meeting adjourned, seven, just around 7 o'clock. Thank you, gentlemen. Well, everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Enjoy your Thanksgiving.
You as well.
We'll see you on Zoom.
See ya. Bye.
Bye-bye.